Forty minutes is a lot for two questions. I think you'll be able to really get the information you need, two questions within ten or fifteen minutes and then have some time to do some follow-up questions. The only other thing I'd recommend is, and you may not agree with this, but I think it's important to have the same baseline for everybody.
Oh, yeah.
So that you have the same two questions.
That's right.
And then after those two questions are asked to each candidate, you have, you know, availability of, that's right, of any of the members.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Were you suggesting two questions per member?
Yes.
Per member, so you're talking about, I got you.
Each one of us can ask them two questions, the same two questions.
The same two questions.
To each of the candidates.
Okay.
And allow the candidate up to two minutes to answer.
Okay.
Now, their interview could go quick. You know, I've had interviews before when we expect long answers and, you know, somebody said, "In a New York minute." And that was the end of that question, went on to the next one. So we ended with them fairly quickly, so...
I mean, I know, well, sorry?
Well, I spoke to someone, a friend of mine that was involved with a search for somebody at Penn State, and they said what they did was they had a list of questions for each person interviewing that they asked, and then I think we could follow up. So that would cut down, because I wouldn't probably have two questions for every candidate, but it would be fair then if every question, if every candidate got the same questions.
Yes.
We, I mean, I'm in the process for a search for a director of an organization locally right now. We were doing phone interviews right now, but we had ten questions and we were keeping that to thirty minutes and we're actually running well under that in most cases. We've never run over yet. So it's pretty, I mean, I think it's pretty manageable. We structure, we, you know, develop the questions we want to ask and then just, you know, kind of say we'd like to keep it to, keep your response to, and have them be concise about it.
So as far as questions, in the timeline for an interview, would we say that two questions were the same, I mean, would we each be allotted up to two questions?
I think it would be good for us as a group to formulate what set of questions we want to ask collectively and then whoever asks them, so that we're not duplicating, you know what I'm saying?
We decide on the questions and then, if you want to do it because you're the moderator, you do it or whatever, but just ask the questions.
But the uniformity in the questions, so we can all determine collectively what questions we should ask.
So we can come up with, you know, before we do the interviews, we can come up with that, we can bounce them off each other here, you know, or even an email, we could come up, here's the list of questions.
That'd be great.
And then if any of you have, you know, a whole bunch of questions and others of us don't, you know, we could say, hey, I'll give you a question or two, and then we can all ask the same one, you know, to each of the candidates. So maybe Mr. Bickford has more, you know, questions, you know, than I could or any of the others, maybe. So with that being said, we have a kind of an idea on what we're going to do for an interview, but I go back to the question about the length of time that we have for the interview and then the number of candidates that we receive.
These interviews will take place alphabetically or by random selection or the time that their package came in or how, and when we interview them, will we have the public?
When? Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, the questions that you ask the first candidate is going to get to the second through the nineteenth, twenty. So you don't want to be the first candidate because you won't know what the questions are, so...
Who could provide the...
Would all the candidates be here at the same time? I mean, wouldn't order them to interview them one at a time?
I think you want to...
Open to public?
Individually.
Oh, yeah.
And without, and without the public audience.
The attorney?
If it was the public, we'd just walk out and tell them their favorite candidate.
I just wanted to clarify, you can do the interviews in public if you want. I mean, obviously, it's an open meeting, this is an open meeting. It probably is appropriate to go into a closed session to interview if you want to do that, or you can do it in public, so that's really up to you if you want to do that. I mean, I agree with that.
Okay, so how, Mr. Spielman, you would say close for the interviews?
I would think so.
Uh, Mr. Crump?
Yes, I agree with that.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. newcomer?
Yes.
Mr. Bickford? Okay, and Ms. Ashbaugh? What would your...
I have a clarifying, I have a clarifying question because I was kind of breaking out or breaking up a little bit there. Are you saying to offer them or allow them to have the questions ahead of time or are you saying no, we should not?
A way to avoid that is we would do each individual, we'd do each interview in closed session so that no one else would have the questions from the public to give to the other candidates. So essentially, we would give them, not give them the questions ahead of time, but as they come in, one-on-one.
Or what the other candidate said.
Or they wouldn't know what the other candidate said or anything of that nature.
That's, that really is the fairest way it seems to me.
So would you, Ms. Ashbaugh, would you have a preference either way, closed session or open session for the interviews?
I like the closed session aspect. I would not object to providing candidates with questions ahead of time, and I say that only because that is, you know, often what they do during the, when they're actually running for the position anyway, when they're going through those forums. But I do think it should be closed in the sense of people shouldn't be able to hear each other's answers or responses.
Okay, closed session interviews, so it's unanimous decision for closed session interviews. And as far as the questions in advance, Ms. Ashbaugh proposes that we do that. Does anyone else have any...
I would think not because when you get your resume, you're getting a sales document that somebody's trying to sell theirself. When you do the interview, you're trying to go beyond that and reveal the person's character, what's really in their mind, to hearts. So I would say no.
Okay. Anyone else agree with Mr. Crump?
I do agree with that.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, Mr. Bickford?
Um, yeah, 'cause I'm thinking about the forums, we don't, we didn't always know the questions in advance. So, yeah, I'd be fine with not giving the questions in advance.
So, Ms. Ashbaugh, everyone else here has thought not to give the candidates the questions ahead of time?
I'm fine. I'm fine either way.
Okay.
I was just throwing that out there as I, you know, I could go either, I'd be fine either way, because I think you get some more in-depth answers sometimes, letting them know the questions ahead of time, but you also not letting them know the questions ahead of time, you do get, you know, a little bit more of that insight on the person and how they, you know, would react on their toes, so to speak.
Okay, great. So it's settled then, we will do closed session interviews, no questions ahead of time to the candidates. Now I go back to the question of the number of candidates that we receive, and I guess we won't know that until the end of the, the end of that, that period. So maybe we ought to revisit this question after we, the deadline, and we know how many candidates we have and know whether or not we're prepared to do up to twenty hours of interviews.
Jerry, how many, how many do you think we could do in one session?
Well...
Four, five, six?
I'm thinking if we had a four-hour window that we allotted, I actually broke it down for one evening, if we did six interviews that would, starting at 3:00 PM, the interviews would end just before, at 7:55 PM with a thirty-minute break in the middle for us, so we could get six candidates. So we're talking three to eight PM, you know, on an evening.
We probably ought to have a contingency plan.
And then we would have to go to the next day.
If we have fifteen, we might want to take five, five, or something like that.
Exactly.
So how are you going to schedule a contingency plan?
I almost...
You can't schedule your emergency plan.
It almost seems like if we could block off several, several days in advance, but, but I think, it seems like it'd be prudent to meet on the twenty-fourth.
Yes.
Go through and say, how many do we actually have that qualify based on the criteria? How many actually qualify? And then we need to contact the candidates and say we need to schedule, you know, we have you four for this evening, four this five, you know, whatever, and then the next, you know. So we need a little lead time that, that, you know, and I think if we meet on the twenty-fourth, it'll become really apparent, but we can go ahead and block off several days or several evenings now, if that's okay with the commission, and then, you know, at least have those earmarked and then we'll know on the twenty-fourth.
You said, you said the twenty-third or twenty-fourth. Now, if you're thinking we might have to go into several days, then you might want to go back to the twenty-third.
Right.
And start on the twenty-third and come to the twenty-fourth and go to the twenty-fifth if we have to, you know, whatever.
So I think that would be fair. We could start on the twenty-third and then go to the twenty-fourth and then...
Because we need, we need time, we need time to look over the applications.
Yes.
And also get the questions ready so that, so that whenever you say we're going to start, we're ready to go for them at that time.
Well, I would say that we do now have at least a week to come up with our questions to put together.
But we still got to get them down on paper, you know, what we wanted to ask.
Sort of vote on which ones. I think, you know, we've, we all come up with several questions and we end up with fifteen questions, we're going to probably say, what are the top?
Eight.
Yeah, or ten or whatever.
Okay.
Is there a reason why we're not considering the twenty-second to be able to do the judiciary background check?
Well, we could absolutely do that. I just thought that we'd have at least provide human resources a day or so to do the, you know, the background checks, so I didn't know how long it would take them, so I don't...
We could be doing, we could do the others while they're doing that.
Yes.
Because if there are twenty, it's going to take some time, and that would allow us to have that, kind of have a discussion regarding some of the questions and then be able to, you know, Tuesday maybe come up with a plan, or even that Monday, the twenty-second, come up with a plan of moving forward, because that next weekend is Memorial Day weekend, and trying to meet with people Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, it's going to be very difficult.
Yeah, I didn't think anybody would want to do that. I didn't, I didn't think so.
Right. No, so that's why I'm trying to think if we needed a couple of, you know, if we had fifteen, twenty candidates, then we might need that extra day, because really you're looking at a four-day week instead of a five-day week. Just because, I'm just thinking because of that Friday not being really feasible for most, for maybe many people, so just to help get something off of our plate, even if everybody couldn't do it, then maybe those that can do it could get together and do that background check on the Monday.
Yes. We could do that.
What's the date that this needs, the need, vital names need to be submitted according to?
Thirty-day calendar.
So the thirty-day calendar would expire on Saturday the twenty-seventh. Am I correct on that?
I think that's correct.
Or the twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh. But that's, you know, Friday, Saturday, Memorial Day weekend, so realistically, we're looking at, you know, if we don't do it before then, you know, the Monday, the thirtieth, you know, afterwards.
Is that using, that's using the thirty day as in calendar days or not week days or business days, correct?
Correct.
So if we were to look at that as business days, that would actually buy us another week at least.
That absolutely would. The state statute does not differentiate between business days or calendar days, says thirty days. I do know from previous, you know, experiences that the governor's office has, you know, used statutes like that to say, oh, fifteen days, oh, we meant fifteen business days. So I've asked the county attorney and he didn't necessarily object.
Clearly, the statute just says days, it doesn't say business days, and as you said, I know there's been some, some times where the governor has interpreted it, you know, when it just says days, business days instead of days. I mean, the reality of it is that there's a third, the statute says thirty days from the time of the vacancy occurs. There's, there's nothing beyond that to say what would happen if you didn't meet the thirty days.
Right.
I think, obviously, we're halfway through, or more than halfway through already by the time the commission got appointed, so I think as long as this commission acts in a reasonable manner and works diligently as possible and gets the names to the commissioners when you're ready, I mean, obviously, your job is to find the best possible candidate.
That's right.
So, you know, I don't believe the intent of the statute is to rush you through it and get someone that we're not comfortable with, so, you know, there's nothing in the statute that said there's any kind of issue beyond that. I mean, obviously, this commission should work towards that, and I think you will.
Yes.
But if it goes beyond the thirty days, whether we consider it business days or days, I think as long as you diligently do it and find the best candidate, I think, as long as you act reasonably, I think, I think that, I think everything will be fine.
Okay, Jennifer, did you hear all of that?
Yes, I did, thank you.
Okay. So we'll just proceed the best we can and do what we can, and we won't, you know, really worry about that, you know, thirty-day window, and we're already well into it. I mean, we'll do the best we can to achieve that, but...
Do you all feel like it would be a good idea then to meet on the twenty-second? Jennifer's suggestion, is that good?
That's fine.
Let's do that. Let's do that.
So...
That's Monday?
That's Monday, the twenty-second.
Is that a three o'clock?
Well, that would be fine with me.
It's fine with me.
So we could do that.
Five twenty-two, three PM, we'll meet right here in a conference room, and the purpose of that meeting is we could do our judiciary case search, we could start opening the applications, we could meet with the attorney's office at that time to go through those disclosure, or the financial disclosure forms and make sure everything's in order. What else would we want to do that evening?
Sort of solidify the questions.
Solidify the questions.
Get to questions again.
So, yep, we'll get the questions together, we'll go through the county attorney. Mr. Trotta?
Yes.
Would that be feasible for your office to have someone here at that time?
Yes.
Three PM on the twenty-second?
Yes.
Thank you very much, sir. And then we'll check with the county and make sure that they could have somebody here. I'm sure they'll be very accommodating. So, okay, so three PM on Monday, the twenty-second, and then we'll schedule the, have a better understanding of who's applied and who's there. I keep looking at my calendar here. So the twenty-second, and then we go into the twenty-third, or maybe at the end of the twenty-second, we'll, we'll know how many people we have, obviously, and then how many interviews we're looking for, and then we can schedule the interviews that night on the twenty-second. We can start to schedule, and then we'll, we can use the twenty-third and twenty-fourth for interviews.
Right.
Hopefully, and then go into the twenty-fifth if we have to for interviews. I think, so if I'm looking at this and I'm thinking, Mr. Berry, you'd suggested we had five interviews, say we did do five interviews a night, the twenty-third, fourth, and twenty-fifth, then we're looking, we really, I don't think anybody would have the stomach for a public hearing on the Friday night before Memorial Day. That might push us till after Memorial Day weekend. Or if we get all the interviews done on the twenty-third and twenty-fourth, we could have the public hearing on that twenty-fifth.
We probably need to have a little advance notice of a public meeting.
Well, that's the thing, yeah.
We might have that in play.
Memorial Day weekend, yeah.
Memorial.
Okay.
What are the advance notes that I need?
So the advance notice, the county typically does two weeks, but there's nothing that specifies or stipulates, is that correct?
That's correct. And normally, when the county has a public hearing, we will advertise for two weeks unless there's, unless there's some specific notice requirements in the statute itself. In this case, there aren't any, so obviously, you want to give as much notice as you can. Again, we have a shorter timeframe, so the sooner you can decide when the public hearings will be, then the notification can go out through a county website, the board of education's website, the, through a press release and try to get the word out.
If there's an intent, you would know that Monday night.
Exactly.
And you'd be scheduled for, I mean, twenty-fifth and...
Yeah, so how about we do that? If, we'll know on the twenty-second how many we have, and then, or we'll schedule interviews for Tuesday and Wednesday, and then if we need to go into that Thursday for interviews, we will, and if we don't, we could schedule the public hearing that Thursday night on Monday night when we meet. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes.
Do you just want to go ahead and schedule it now and get it on the calendar?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
I did hear from Mr. Wright at the school board, yes, they get, if we get them the information today, they will post it.
Okay, thanks, sir. Okay, so that's really the, the crux of all this. Let me look at, see if I had any other notes on here. No, I think that's, we did talk about, about the interviews and the order in which we do it. I really have no rhyme or reason, other than we could just, for fairness, say alphabetical, we'll just interview, you know, alphabetically in order, any of the candidates that are qualified.
I'd say postmark.
What's that?
Postmark.
Right, when it came in.
When it came in, when it's logged in.
So Vicki had said that she could, when they receive it, they could log it on the front of the, of their application package, and I think that would be a fair way of...
Although the only thing that would...
It shows interest.
Yeah, yeah. Unless they could meet, you know, in other words, let's say the first candidate came in timestamp and they said, no, I can't meet at that time because I have another obligation, but, you know what I mean? You wouldn't want to hole up all the interviews, but, but I think to the spirit of keeping it as much as possible, I think it's a good idea.
Okay. That would be a good idea. Any objections to during that, in the order they were received here to county? Mr. Spielman?
I don't think so.
Mr. Crump? Okay, so that's what we'll do.
Can I have a...
Yes, sir.
Richard followed up. He just spoke with our superintendent, Boyd Michael. It would be better for us if we posted official release from the commission or the county, is that what you have planned? I think that's what we're planning.
Yes, sir.
Is where we'll put together, there will be a release from us that will be posted on the school system website, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And can I just go back and revisit the criteria, because I think we need to make sure that we, we are, we're putting that up front to say, you know, you need to make sure you complete all these things, so was it, did you say a resident of Washington County or a registered voter in Washington County?
A registered voter in Washington County.
Voter of Washington County, okay. So that's one criteria, that they need to read the state statute, read the ethics statute and complete the disclosure. Was there anything else?
Now, I put in there, read the state statute, that, that was just something I had an idea. I mean, there's no requirement for that, we don't need that. I'm sure a lot of the candidates are probably aware of what's going on, so, you know, it's up for discussion, I mean, we read that earlier.
And then, you know, and then the other criteria was that we had was just to have a cover letter and a resume.
Yep, so just to rehash what I have for everybody, so we, the, the instructions would be roughly, I haven't written everything out here, we'll use Ms. Vicki's, you know, better notes. So read, the applicants would read the state statute regarding the Board of Education vacancy, which, and I was corrected by the attorneys beforehand, this official commission's name is the Washington County School Board Nominating Commission, because that is what is spelled out in the statute. So I had been saying the Washington County BOE Nominating Commission, so have to strike BOE and the School Board Nominating Commission. So when we do the press releases, that will be. So with that, we would read the state statute regarding the School Board Nomination Commission and the vacancy, read the Washington County Public Schools Ethics Policy, download and complete the Washington County Public Schools Financial Disclosure Form. They would add a cover letter and a resume, and in the cover letter, we would ask them to include an explanation of why they're applying, their current occupation, any relevant community experience and educational experiences, and whatever else we had said, whatever vernacular.
And I'm, I'm putting on HR hat, even though I'm not an HR person, per se, but I'm, I'm kind of using the term, you're using instructions and I'm saying criteria, because there may be some candidates that don't fulfill the background check, and so they don't become candidates, so we disqualify them from an interview because they did, so it's important, I think, painted to say upfront that these criteria, to successful completion of these criteria, including background checks and so forth.
Perfect.
Okay, and it, it is an HR term, it's like, so people will come back and say, well, that's not fair, I, you know, well, that was part of the criteria that you had to pass the background checks for, you know, judicial or, you know, background check for national or...
And now, speaking of the background checks, I do believe that that may be subjective here amongst the commission, and correct me if I'm wrong, but there has spelled out in no statute or no regulation, as far as I'm aware. Now, the school board attorney might say otherwise. I don't know of anything in the, that might come up in a background check that would disqualify somebody from being in the, as part of that. So what I'm suggesting here is, we as a commission may say in closed session, hey, we reviewed their background check and they had X, Y, and Z in there. I don't feel comfortable forwarding them as a candidate for the school board with my name, you know, attached to that, so that would be the subjective nature of the passing the background check.
True.
Where are the organization here? Unless there is something spelled out by the school board attorney or the school, Washington County Public School System, that I'm not aware of, that would preclude them from serving. I don't know if there's any more perpetued issues or anything of that nature. Could the attorneys weigh in on that?
I was going to say, let me, let me just say that Vicki Long went and talked to our HR department and, and the background checks that they do for certain county employees apparently takes several weeks to do. It's a longer process. The other issue that was brought up by our HR department, which actually is a good one, and maybe that's where you're leaning to, is that normally candidates don't have to, don't go through a background check for what it is, as far as I know. Employees that they do, but they do not, so, you know, if you apply and you run for election, you're not subject to that. Now, obviously, this commission, you know, wants to do its due diligence, I'm not sure a background, background check is going to be required, and it does raise the issue of if something comes up in a background check, you know, what do you do with that? Does that disqualify them? And it sounds like it's, it's, it's a long process, which is probably not going to happen, so...
Okay.
I'm not sure that a background check is something, and that's not something that's required by the candidate.
Right.
But I'm not sure this commission should probably, should go down that road necessarily.
Okay.
Now, you can do due diligence and talk to people and, and do anything you want to do to check that out, but I think a background check doesn't sound like you're going to be able to get it done in a timely fashion.
Okay.
And it's probably not something that this, this commission should probably do, based on what you had just said and what I, what we've just found out, so...
Okay, and Mr. Bickford?
Yeah, the only other thing I would add is, once you become a school board member, you do get fingerprinted, because all employees...
Oh, okay.
You are considered an employee of the Washington County Public School System, don't get me wrong, but I have to get fingerprinted, they do do a check.
Okay.
It's a formal FBI criminal background check, which is every state, and the other benefit of that is if someone commits a crime, is accusing a crime anywhere in the United States and is fingerprinted, that report comes back as a report of education, so we, we require that of all, every school system employee has a formal FBI fingerprint check.
So I'm, I'm thinking, my thoughts out loud here are that we have just a couple of things then. We, we do have the public hearings and the public can weigh in, so hopefully, if there's some skeletons in the closet that the public is aware of, they could bring that to light for us, unless they happen in remote portions of the country, I'm not really sure, but I just want to make sure we do our due diligence, but, Mr....
I don't think you want the audience to get in on somebody's qualification or their background.
Oh, no, no, no.
That's just a can of worms.
Yep.
And they'll make up anything they want and mess up everything. I think, I think what you need to do in your cover letter is say that the successful candidate that's successful, whatever nominated here, nominees, will have to pass a background check based on whatever, you know, fingerprinting and the whole nine yards, put that in the cover letter, because if somebody has something in their background, they know it, and, and if they get nominated by us, and, you know, we're going to nominate three, if they're checked out, it will dump the winner and we'll go to the next person.
Yeah, but what I'm, but what I'm saying is, and I, I'm not sure you can, I'm not sure you can do that because it's not a requirement for the position.
Okay.
So I hear what you're saying.
It's a requirement for this commission.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, the due diligence is, I'm not sure that you can agree.
So, so someone goes through?
Yeah. I think you're saying once a person is appointed.
Once appointed, it's a point, once a person is appointed, then absolutely, that's-
You might as well, you might as well tell them upfront.
You have an idea. I just don't think we're going to, I don't think the county has the ability to do that at any time. Quickly, I'm not sure this commission should put itself in a position to review a background check and then try to make a decision whether the person's, you know.
No, we're, we're not going to do that. We're not going to do it.
Because Richard's informing them that they will-
Evaluate the-
He checked out.
Oh, I mean, maybe I misunderstood. So you were saying just be aware that when you, if you get appointed, then you have to do it, right?
Bingo.
I apologize, I misunderstood. I didn't have been here.
Okay. So, so that's settled then on, on what we can do and what we're looking and hopefully we get good information and we do the best we can in advancing the candidates. And then, you know, also, I do have to throw out that, you know, we're, we're not the ones that picked the end candidate. You know, we submit up to three. So, the decision rests with the commissioners and they can do whatever their county attorneys recommend that they do to do their due diligence.
Or none of the above.
Or none of the above. And like I said, the end result is that the school board, they fingerprint, they do the, you know, the FBI check and all that. So, it is what that is.
Just let them know that that's coming, that's all.
Exactly. Okay, so then we have the, we downloaded the financial disclosure forms. We've got the cover letter and resume. And in the cover letter, we're putting that vernacular, that a successful candidate will complete a a background check according to Washington Public School System.
Is that the appropriate way to tell you, or that'd be fingerprinted or?
Yeah, we refer to it as FBI criminal background.
FBI criminal background check.
Once appointed.
Once appointed and go from there. And then all the other stuff, about the explanation of why, relevant community experience, current occupation. So, that's it. I really think we covered pretty much everything that we can today.
I think the big question we're going to ask, we've already put that, why do you want this job, you know?
Actually, why they're run. Yep.
And, and what are your qualifications? Those are the big questions. We can ask, we can ask some others. And what we really do is evaluate what's in that cover letter.
Sir?
I was just going to ask, so, so we have right now the evening of the 22nd, of the 23rd, and of the 24th blocked off, as well as possibly the 25th?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then, we'll go from there.
Yes, interviews possibly, we'll know on the evening of the 22nd. We're meeting here, 3:00 PM on the 22nd. We'll start in open session and then we can vote to go into closed session to review the, when we open up the applications and we speak with the, Mr. Trotta's attorney, office on the disclosure forms. We can get into the nitty-gritty of the applications. We can then determine how many interviews we're going to have. And then we're scheduling the 23rd and the 24th for interviews. And on the 22nd, we'll break it down on what time the interviews are, the orders, and then-